Normally over in the council two seat next to Tom as acting mayor, I'll now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 You asked me?
The questions just get harder.
Typically, we have an invocation at the beginning, and I jumped the gun on that, and then we'll jump, we'll go to that and have the pledge of allegiance as well. I'm afraid I don't recognize or wouldn't recognize Lee Cantonan if Lee was here. Is Lee in the audience today?
He's not.
Okay. Bill, would you step up for us?
Sure.
We'll take care of it. Thank you.
Could you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we come here tonight, we give you thanks, we give you all the honor and glory, Father, for, for what you're doing in this city. We thank you for all the residents of Fergus Falls. I thank you for the city council, the mayor, and their willingness to serve. Thank you for my fellow city staff as well, too, and the privilege of serving here. Father, we pray for wisdom that you would give each one of our council members wisdom tonight, and us as staff as well, too. And we just invite you into this meeting. We pray this now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good job, Bill. Okay, now we're back on track. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Do you want to go through it first?
Yeah, thank you, councilmembers. I do have one request from councilmember Hicks to add new business item, conversation-related infrastructure planning, or CIP planning. So at the end of the meeting, under new business, we can broach that subject.
As I understand it, any change to the agenda requires the consent of the unanimous, unanimous consent of the council. Is everybody all right with adding that new business item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll add that, then. Anything else? Very good. And that, that was just a change, that was to approve it. Yeah, sorry. I don't believe we have any public hearings tonight. We don't have any awarding of bids to do. So we move to petitions, communications, and open forum. And to begin with this, we'll have a resolution acknowledging the retirement in 43 years of service, Tony Neville. And got a resolution to read?
I will offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Jim, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Jim and Anthony. Tony, here we go. Resolution regarding the retirement of Tony Neville. Whereas Tony Neville has submitted his intent to retire effective June 30th, 2023, and whereas Tony was hired as the information systems manager on May 12, 1980, and he has remained in that position until his retirement, and whereas Tony's creativity and ingenuity drove him to procure, build, and connect the systems, platforms, and networks that have kept the city operating smoothly for over four decades, and whereas Tony's passion and commitment to keep our technology operating as efficiently and effectively as possible, seven days a week, 24 hours a day during his tenure, has made him an indispensable resource to the city and to his fellow employees. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept the resignation of Tony Neville and thank him for 43 years of dedicated service as an employee to the city of Fergus Falls. The above and foregoing resolution was offered at a regular meeting of the city council held on June 20, 2023 by councilmember Jim Fish, who moved its adoption and was seconded by councilmember Anthony Hicks and adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is adopted. Tony, thank you very much. Is there anything you'd like to say? Give you an opportunity, if you'd like. No?
Nope.
Come on up to your podium.
So I will just say a word or two, because I can't ever keep my mouth shut. But we are certainly going to miss Tony. He, you wouldn't believe the systems that he's built here. I mean, when you started, we didn't have computer systems, right? You created everything. And we have other cities that may call us and say, what, you know, what programs do you purchase at Fergus Falls? What do you, you know, what, what's your platform you're running on? Well, ours is in-house written. And they're like, what? I mean, Tony has written every accounting system, every loan system, special assessments, the utility billing, amortization systems. I mean, you have to know all this, and how accounting works, and how it all is going to flow. He's written, tailored it so that if we have state reporting to do, Sandy and I are able to run a report that matches the way the state wants it reported. Saves us so much work. He is an absolutely brilliant man, and we're going to really be missed. Thank you so much.
Not to mention, I believe he was on the fire department for how many of those years?
Still is.
Still is?
He may be retiring from that in the future, but Darla said, well, we don't know quite yet, right?
Very good. Thank you, Tony. The next item on our agenda is the open forum. And under the new process that we have, this is now a part of our council meeting, and people don't typically sign up like we had in the past. And so now it's a time for, if there's persons in the audience that would like to address the council, time up to three minutes on some topic relating to city business. We'll invite anyone who's interested to step to the podium, state their name, whether or not they're a resident of the city. Seeing no one, we'll close the open forum and move to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight, we've got five items. I don't believe that we've had any requests to pull anything or talk about anything separately. So I'll request a, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Tom. And a second?
I'll second that.
Laura, thank you, Laura.
Wait to speak.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under ordinances and resolutions tonight, we've got a couple ordinances that are going to get their second reading. Second reading of ordinance 38, eighth series, amending chapter 36.01, local lodging tax. Claire, do you need to make a presentation on this, or do we just announce that it's a second reading?
So it's, it is just a second reading. It's just a roll call. And what, just as a reminder, what we were doing here is adding the collection of lodging tax on municipal campground and Airbnb's, VRBOs, those type of rentals. So, so it's just a roll call at this point, right, Rolf?
That's correct.
Okay.
Very good. Well, I'll call for the, roll call vote on this.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is also approved. Second reading of ordinance 39, eighth series, an ordinance of the city of Fergus Falls imposing a local sales and use tax. Now, this one, as I understand it, is for the arena and the DeLagoon improvements?
The aquatic center in DeLagoon.
Aquatic center.
Yep. Again, half-cent sales tax, just like what was before, for the library and for the arena. It was removed at the end of September, so now it would go back on October 1st of 2023. And the longest it could run under the legislation is December 31st of 2037. And it's for those two projects.
Correct.
Correct. So this is, again, is just a second reading on that.
Very good.
So a roll call.
A roll call, and we don't need a motion or anything on that one. So we'll call for a roll call on that one, too, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. The next item is a resolution approving the donor recognition request for the Warren and Jeanette Lowell Arts, Culture, and Travel Collection at the Fergus Falls Public Library. Would I be correct to think that you've got something to tell us about this, Gail?
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The library received a substantial, the library foundation received a financial contribution from the Jeanette and Juan Lowell estate. The, after talking to the executors of the estate, it was determined that using a portion of those funds to develop a collection focusing on arts, culture, and heritage, excuse me, arts, travel, and culture would be an appropriate use of the funds. So what makes this a little unique, and why we're doing donor recognition, is we are making this a named collection. It's not uncommon for us to receive funding, for instance, from the friends of the library for special purchases. Maybe it's on children repair manuals or poetry books. And they would receive a book plate acknowledging that contribution. And sometimes those memorials come from families. But this will actually become a named collection, meaning that it will be searchable in our catalog and have a little bit more staying power and longevity. So that's what kind of separates it from other, other donations for materials.
Very good. Thank you, Gail. Gail is the director of our library. And Al, question?
I'd just like to make a comment. I've known, I've known Warren and Jeanette Lowell for many years. I actually met them when they lived in Chicago. And talk about fabulous people they are, they were. I think that's a great, a great donation that you received from their estate.
Thank you.
Al, would you like to present that resolution?
Yeah, I'll present that.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Very good. From Laura. And a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Very good. The resolution is approved. Moving on to the bills. We have the presentation of claims tonight in the amount of $2,026,651.83. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim Fish.
I'll second.
Second from Tom Ruffer. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Resolution?
Roll call.
Roll call on that one, too. Sorry. Roll call.
Yes.
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 I'll get this motion and roll call thing down eventually. Sorry. We don't have any board, committee, or department reports. I'll look to report on the downtown riverfront project phase two bonds. And Bill Sanmar, finance director, will bring us up to date.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. At the Port Authority meeting tonight, we brought forward a resolution for the port, and I'm just going to pull the resolution so I can recite the words of it appropriately here. So resolution providing for the competitive negotiated sale of $2,170,000 general obligation bond, series 2023A. So that is for the phase two portion now of the downtown riverfront improvements. So we're looking at issuing bonds for 2.17 million. And that is financing certainly project costs, but also some donations that will be coming in over four years. So the bulk of the donations will be coming in by, like, early 2024. So we're not going to finance donations that are here already or coming in shortly. We don't want to pay interest on, you know, something that's going to come in the door right around the corner. But for about four years worth of donations, or $614,000 worth of donations, and then the rest of that is project costs. So the total amount of that project, and I know, I put this in your packet as well, that memo coming forward, but total project of $5,353,000. You add issuance costs onto that, we're up to 5.444 million. So the bonds, 2.17. And then we're putting city cash in of $1,888,500. And then the donations that we already are going to have in cash that we have now or will be in shortly is 1.385 billion. So just an update for you, that the Port Authority is authorizing Baker Tilly, our municipal advisor, to basically get to work on that, go out and give bids for us. We're going to accept those bids on July 17 at 10:00 a.m. Baker Tilly will be receiving those at their offices. And then we will come to the Port Authority that night with an award of those bonds, and then back to the city council to have you ratify that. You will, as the city council, you already authorized the port to go up to 3.7 million of bonding, and we're coming within that as well. So we're good there. But wanted to let you know what happened at the port. We'll be coming back to you on July 17 with the results of that, and then for action at both port and the city.
Very good. Thank you.
So no action tonight, just an update.
Any questions for Bill regarding this? Thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you.
We don't have any old or unfinished business. So the next item is a motion directing the city attorney to place a moratorium in effect until January 1, 2025, regarding the issuance of license for the sale of recreational THC or marijuana. This is under new business. And the motion is being brought to, brought by the staff. I guess you're requesting that we do this, correct?
Yes, Your Honor, councilmembers. This is, I'll play Kyle tonight. This is coming from Chief Berger. And you put a memo together in your packets. But just to clarify what the action would be, if you guys want to move forward, it will be directing the city attorney to draft an interim ordinance for this moratorium, and then setting a public hearing for July 17 at 5:30. The law that was approved by the legislature and signed by the governor, which goes into effect August 1 of 2023, allows municipalities to put a moratorium in place until January 1 of 2025. The reason that date is selected is that's when they anticipate the Office of Cannabis Management will be up and running, which is the office that will be overseeing the licensing and regulation of the THC and marijuana products. So Kyle's recommendation is to put this moratorium in place for that reason. He states in his memo, it would be prudent to allow the state time to establish their control board and set into place policies and standards first, prior to us moving into the issuance of licenses, and then allow the city more time to evaluate our obligations adequately and plan for implementation. So it gives us the ability to put the ordinances in place that we feel be necessary prior to the city doing the registrations for these companies starting in January of 2025. So this does not impact the people that are in business today. The low potency hemp edibles will continue to be sold. Those will be licensed under the department, Minnesota Department of Health. They're currently under the pharmacy board. Ultimately, that will also end up under the Office of Cannabis Management as well, when that office is up and running in 2025. Essentially, sales will not be legal in Minnesota on these THC marijuana products, not the ones that are already going, but the new ones, until that office is created. So in essence, this isn't allowed anyway, or sales are not allowed anyway, until they're licensed through that new office. But this just provides the formality of having the moratorium in place to allow us to better understand how the state's going to handle that, get some guidance from the League of Minnesota Cities, and then create our local ordinances and policies in advance of January of 2025, when the Office of Cannabis Management is up and running, and then the city ultimately is responsible for issuing the registrations that the office is licensing. So that's a lot of information. If the council wants to go forward with that, you can do so with that motion directing the city attorney to draft the interim ordinance. Again, it's interim because it expires January 1 of 2025, or unless the council ends it sooner. And then setting the public hearing, there is a public hearing required in the new statute to take this moratorium action. And we would suggest that happens July 17 at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you, Andrew. So the request is potentially for a motion to this effect, but?
I'll make a motion, then I got a question.
Do we have a second?
And I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead. Anthony?
So basically, the, the two businesses that are in town, obviously, are not going to be affected by this. But will that, if, if there was a third person or fourth person come along, would that be, would they be affected, you know, under low potency?
Yeah, Your Honor, councilmember Hicks, under this action, they would still be allowed to get licensed through the city. This is not handling those at all. And we do currently have, I think, four licenses existing. So there are more than the two. Yep.
So when this comes through, can, can we relate this back to, like, the planning commission? When, I, I printed off HF 100 and went through it, and there's a lot of ambiguous, ambiguous statements in it. And, like, you know, particularly, I was more interested, obviously, from an employment perspective. But when it gets clarified, I mean, can we tie this to, you know, zoning as well?
Yes.
You should. You should. That should be a discussion that you have.
Because I, I also kind of, you know, I spent the weekend reading about this stuff. And, I mean, I, I looked at hemp-derived edible cannaboid products. And, you know, when you actually look at it, there's a lot of things that they have to do on, on this, which, you know, from packaging, you know, labeling, you know, so I think, you know, and believe it or not, in this document, just out of interest, there's a lot of, a lot of consideration about cross-contamination. And so I think we need to bring the two together in, in terms of planning and zoning. So, thank you.
And at this point, that whole involved detailed discussion will be something that will be down the road for us. If we were to enact a moratorium at this stage, we'd have actually a fair amount of time to discuss and consider all of those items that you brought up.
Thank you.
Any further comments on this motion?
I was wondering, is this going to affect the relicensing of the four businesses that?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Jobbitt, does not impact that. The licensing will still be done at the local level on those items until the Office of Cannabis Management is up and running in, in January of '25. So in speaking with Rolf, we'll have to, between now and January 1 of 2025, we'll have to amend our ordinances to remove the licensing piece. But that doesn't impact anything for the beginning of the year. You guys can continue to issue those licenses for the time being until the office is up and running.
The, the licenses are valid for one year, and the applicants will have to reapply for the license for 2024. But when it comes to 2025, there will be a new licensure process in place through the state. And then, then we simply act as a registration for purposes of making sure that they comply with our zoning and for compliance checks and the like.
Thank you.
Yeah, Your Honor, if I can go further with that. So what, how it's kind of spelled out to us is the, the Office of Cannabis Management will license, they'll issue the license to the business, then the Office of Cannabis Management consults with the municipality, so in this case, Fergus Falls, to ensure that it conforms with our zoning code and any other local, you know, things that have to be addressed, setbacks, some of those things. If that's the case, then the city would actually provide a registration, is what it's called, to the business. There's a fee for that. And with that, we would be the one doing compliance checks on anybody that has that registration in Fergus Falls. We would have the ability to revoke that registration if, you know, if circumstances exist to support that. And we do have the ability to limit the number that we allow in the community of certain things. We can't limit the number of these low potency edibles. But when we're talking like marijuana dispensaries, we have the ability to limit it to one per every 12,500 residents. So in our case, that would be one. You know, bigger cities, obviously, that number grows per 12,500 residents or population. So that's kind of high level how we anticipate that going. There's a lot of moving parts and pieces, and, you know, that office doesn't even exist today. So they're going to have a lot of work to do. And, and we'll continue to just, you know, try to learn as we go and figure out what best practices will be. And we anticipate the league will have those sooner than later for us. And, and the league does have a seat on the advisory board that's helping to inform the Office of Cannabis Management as well. So we'll see how it all plays out, but this gives us time to do so. And, and there'll be a lot of discussions, I think, about this going forward. And like you guys mentioned at the committee of the whole meeting last week, you still want to review the current zoning ordinance as it relates to these edible folks that are in business today. I don't want to throw out the wrong term, so I'm trying to pick my words a little bit carefully, because I don't fully have my arms wrapped around it. But we'll still bring that back, because that is separate from this moratorium that we're talking about today. So we'll continue that discussion as well.
So there's a distinction, essentially, between what the businesses that are now in business are selling.
Yes.
The gummies and the edibles, and then what is now being described as recreational THC and recreational marijuana. And so the existing things will be able to continue as they are. But this would be for anything beyond that.
That's correct.
In this realm.
Yes.
Any further comment on this motion to direct the city attorney to draft a moratorium that would be in effect till January 1, 2025?
And set the?
Including a public hearing on July 17.
Perfect.
I think I got the details there. No further comment? All in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed? The motion carries. We just have a few announcements to make. Our next committee of the whole meeting is on June 28.
We do have that new business.
Oh, I did have that in really small print here.
[laughter]
Sorry. This was a CIP.
I, thank you. What I wanted to do was just, like, you know, wonder if we can get to a point whereby, you know, we, we all got elected on the basis of kind of looking at infrastructure and, you know, the needs around the city. You know, there's a lot of roads that are obviously in need of repair. And somehow or other, we've got to come together on, on how we're going to increase, you know, funding to get that done. Because, you know, every day, you know, if ever I talk to a resident, that's what gets, it's front and center. And many of the other things that we deal with, they don't, they, most people don't ever mention. Obviously, only specific people on specific topics. And, you know, we've talked about, obviously, franchise fees, we've talked about bonding, we've talked about tax levy. You know, the one thing we haven't talked about is donations on the basis of adopt a pothole. And, you know, and somewhere along the line, I think we've got to get back to how we're going to do this. Because that's kind of part of, part and parcel of what we were elected for, and to get something done. And I know, obviously, the tax levy committee is meeting, and I'm sure that's high on their agenda. But if we're going to look at, you know, other, other means, we need to kind of have a work session or something to start talking about it so that we can get something done. You know, I think we've done a lot of recreational projects, you know, that are going to enhance the city we live in. But now it's time to move to some of the basics. They're not as, you know, they're not as fun and then, you know, to talk about. But I think we need to kind of somehow come together and get it done. And whether that's, you know, a specific work session or, you know, an extended committee of the hall that's in events that we know, or something, so we can kind of, you know, earlier council meeting. So, and it was, they're throwing it out to the council, is everybody, would everybody be on board in doing something so that we can get something done?
Thank you, Anthony. Are you going to suggest a specific work session timeframe? You want to put a motion together for this, or are you looking?
I would leave probably the session for, if the staff could look at it within, say, like, the next month. You know, just depending on what else is on the agenda that's going to consume, you know, if it's a long agenda, we don't need to extend it. If we don't have to, if there's a short agenda like this evening, you know, would be an ideal time. So maybe I'd make the motion that staff, you know, put, put something to, some bullet points together that we can talk about, and they pick a date within the next kind of, you know, three council meetings.
I would second that.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thanks. Jim, any further input then on this idea?
I'm sure Laura wants to jump at it, too. But when we're, the tax levy committee, we've been talking, that's kind of what we've been talking about, is how we're going to fund these roads. And there's a lot of options out there that we're looking at. And so the 28th, I think we're going to see a lot of, more of it. Is that right, Bill and Anthony? Or Bill and, we're going to see more?
We'll make more progress by then.
Yeah. So then I think we should do it after that meeting, so we got something to kind of look at for what?
The tax levy committee is?
Tax levy committee on the 28th. Do it after that, then we'd have more information for us to talk about, and then.
That would work on my three meetings.
There you go. I just want, just, because it's just coming up, and it's, we've already met twice, so.
It's still the 17th. Maybe have a, well, the Port Authority meets that date. Or, so maybe the first meeting in August.
So maybe the first meeting in August, we can have a work session prior.
Yep.
We had a light committee of the whole.
Yeah, we'll look at that and figure out if it's the end of July or early August, but that kind of tracks well with tax levy, and then we don't interfere with the Port Authority.
Thank you.
So with the target of some type of work session being pulled together by the staff and suggested for toward the end of July or beginning of August, following the time that the Tax Levy will have begun some work and have made some presentation to the full council on the twenty-eighth, I believe you said, Scott?
We're, we're going to be, we're going to, we're going to meet the twenty-eighth, and we're not going to bring nothing back. We're going to know, we're going to ask some more answers when you ask the questions by then, because we've thrown quite a few out in the last two meetings, two meetings anyway, so I think would be a good time after that, we can have more questions, or answers.
And it's generally helpful when you've got a pretty big topic to start with a small group that can really focus on some issues. In this case, a small group being you and Laura and Bill and Ben, right?
Andrew.
Ben and Andrew.
And then as you come, then the larger council will have a chance to ask some questions and, and tear you apart a little bit, I suppose, in July or August. And so with that in mind, the motion then is to ask the staff to go to work on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. So now we're to the announcements. Maybe the whole meeting next will be on June twenty-eighth, and our next council meeting is on July third, so we tuck that one right in before the Fourth of July. And I know it has happened in the past where there's been a lack of a quorum because of the timing and stuff, so we'll just have to keep our ears tuned to see if we really end up with a meeting there. We probably have plenty to talk about, so hopefully we'll be able to pull it together.
I guarantee we'll have a meeting committee of the whole and a council meeting.
Okay, so we've got agenda, so be ready for it. Don't leak down. Keeping in mind the week of the Fourth of July, there'll be, the city offices closed, and the garbage and recycling schedule will get pushed back a day to July fifth. With no further business?
Your Honor.
I'm sorry.
Speaking of garbage, we have a garbage truck that's got issues.
Okay.
So the routes tomorrow could be delayed.
Tomorrow's garbage route will be delayed due to some trouble with the truck?
Yes.
Our new truck hasn't arrived yet?
No.
Okay, so the backup truck is still not a backup yet?
No.
All right, we appreciate that. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.